All right, I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen for Wednesday at 6:06 PM. Could I have a roll call?
Six, Tenduranian.
And Veronica Calle.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Madam Chair.
Yes, hang on one second.
Before you start, when you speak, turn your face towards the computer. You keep cutting out.
Oh, all right. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to announce that the meeting is being taped recorded by Talk Loudly. This is for the audience at home. And it will be posted on YouTube. It is not live on Channel 9 because there is a competing board meeting tonight, and we are not the board that usually meets on Wednesday nights. So they get priority. Chairments additions and deletions, I have a few, under 1.6. Review and approve the meeting minutes as available. We will be looking at the minutes for May 2nd and May 3rd tonight. And then I would also like to delete under Meeting Business, 4.1, Use of Town Vehicle Policy, second reading. Unless you have that with you. It wasn't in the sharepoint. Later, okay. That will be moved to next week's meeting, 5/17. And then I'd like to add 5.6. Sign the previously approved contract with K-5 Corporation for Reimagine Streets RFP Project, including the bike lanes and the crosswalk, and authorize sending of the notice to proceed. And I think everything else will move to 5/17. All right. All right, Teresa, are you okay with those additions? All right, do either of you have anything else that you'd like to add? No? We have a 6:05 appointment to deliberate and vote on the Huntingland Farms application for a wine and malt license. The hearings were during the 4/20 and 4/27 meeting. And I think that's for completeness, even though this is a deliberation tonight, I'm gonna send this around just so that I have all people that are here. And Harrison, if you could come and get this one and start it on that side, that would be wonderful. Thank you. So please sign in if you are in attendance. Did I miss something?
Were there any comments?
Anybody here or in the audience that has a comment to make? About anything. It's just public comment period. So if you want to make it about hunting land farms, you can, but it is a comment. Okay, thank you. Any other public comments?
On the hunting land farm, we didn't get later yet, so we'll see that.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have? All right. Did I miss anything else? All right, so let's go to the meeting minutes. For the May 2nd minute. Any comments? Any changes or deletions? All right. And Veronica Calle, yeah? All right. But we also have the May 3rd to consider. Is there a motion? Oh, no, it's not the annual town meeting. Oh, any comments on either of those, on those minutes, 5/3? All right, this is the meeting before the annual town meeting, not the annual town meeting. Thank you. Kathy does those. All right. Teresa, are you in favor? Chaz?
Yes.
Right, thank you.
File in PDF so that you can do your thing on it.
Thank you very much. I'll do my thing Friday. Well, are you gonna do it on the weekend? I'll do it next. Pencil on you doing it.
Yeah.
I'll look for it, yeah.
Saturday at the latest.
Will be approved. All right. Anyway. On stage should be two signing sheets going around. It's the Board of Selectmen that needs to discuss this. So how do you want to do it? Do you want to go with the motion? And then yes, and vote? So that's an motion to go forward with deliberation. Or are you moving to approve? Okay. So we don't have a motion other than forward with deliberation. All those in favor? Because we're going forward with deliberation, so all in favor of going forward with deliberations, Teresa?
That's Sexton Duranian, yes.
We were just discussing. We didn't vote to approve or not approve yet. That's one. In other words, entry and exit to the place, to the site itself, trash removal and policing the site, selling to owners is something that we discussed, which is disallowed anyway. I'm gonna, we should all put our phones on silent. That includes me. All right, we talked about flyers being distributed. So those were the things that we had discussed. So. Well, let me, Chaz, do you have comments to make?
I said what I needed to say the last time I believe.
My suggestion would be to go for a motion, and then before we add conditions, we need to know how we're gonna do this before we add conditions, or how does that work? No, I understand that, so I want to know what the process is.
The process would be to move to permit or disallow.
Right.
Or deny, permit or deny.
Right.
The permit.
Right. If it was.
Permit with conditions, yes.
Then we discuss the conditions afterwards, or do we discuss?
During the deliberation, during the, you know, once the motion has been made, discuss the deliberations, the the conditions.
Right, so make the motion, then motion to approve or disapprove, you would be discussing conditions.
Correct. Permit or deny, and then when discussed, we can amend with conditions. I think this is our first liquor license from scratch. So I guess for me, I have a concern about the churches on the common. I have a concern about the opioid crisis center. I have a concern about the churches, not the churches, the schools, but the church school. I have a concern about the bandstand. Madam Chair. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, but when you move, we can't hear you.
Yeah, you gotta keep pace.
If you're looking the way you are now, we can hear you, but once you go back and forth, we cannot hear what is said. We also cannot hear anyone who's in the audience, just so that you know.
You couldn't hear comments from?
From the audience, from the audience.
That's muted.
And unless you're looking forward, where you are now, nobody can hear if you say something. I could hear Chaz.
All right, so I was in the middle of one. Churches, the bandstand. The opioid crisis center. We are the ones that determine whether or not we allow that, because it's not by law. Allowed by the local licensing authority, the permit isn't allowed in 500 sheets of a church. And there is an opportunity to purchase liquor not that within walking distance of the store. So those are my, you know, concerns. Anything further to say? All right, so do we have a second motion? Give one or the other, and then we either vote yes or no.
One second.
The hunting land farm. All right. Discussion. Or should we vote?
Having something that close to that particular area.
I guess how do we get the conditions in, if the conditions? All right, I would like to amend the motion to move to permit a wine and malt license for hunting land farms with or without condition. And when we vote, please vote which way you're going. Or please note, that's the way we're going. Let's determine the let's do it, and then we can vote on the conditions, should that be necessary. All right, so Teresa, votes. And Veronica Calle, no.
Madam Chair, we're still having difficulties hearing any of you speaking.
If you're all the way, it's all the way up, you're.
If you have to move the computer closer or speak up, please try that.
All right, well.
Why don't you try putting yours here? Your Is that better, Dave?
Say something, Veronica.
Your speaker's off.
Dave, can you hear us better now?
Yes, Teresa is still off to the side enough, though, that we're not hearing her.
Teresa, say something. We'll move this back and forth. Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so what just happened is we voted on whether or not to permit a wine and malt license for hunting land farms. The vote was Teresa Morris, yes, with conditions, Chaz Sexton-Duranian, no, and Veronica Calle, no. So thank you very much. But the vote has, the motion has failed. Thank you.
So my question is, with conditions, we are okay with that. If you want to change the parking, we can change the parking. The business, no, I have to say something, because they, by three people, cannot decide like that. Because whole community, my customers, I'm serving this community like more than 10 years. Most of my customers want the liquor down there, because there was one store which is closed now, and they don't have to stop by another place to buy the liquor. All the arbiters, they don't have any issues at all. You can see, nobody complained anything about that, except one about, I don't know for what reason, she lives all the way back, like few houses back. With conditions, what's the problem? That I don't understand. I don't want to go further to fight this thing. You guys have to understand, because of the COVID, business is ruined. I'm not making any money. If you want to make this ghost town, I'm okay with that. This is in historic place, I have this store. I don't want to close the store and just put, like.
And trust, trust on me. We will work, try based on this.
In 10 years, there is no issue at all from anybody for this store.
We never sell under 18, under 21 lottery.
I never get any single ticket for that also.
And I don't know why you guys sell.
No, I have to say something, I don't.
Please try to understand, you know, my business is very bad right now.
It's not that we don't understand. I don't think that we need to enter into any more discussion. I apologize. We did have a hearing. We've always, you know, it was both sides were able to talk, and we have deliberated, and we've made a vote. I'm sorry that it has nothing, there's no personal that.
But parking is not big issue. We will do something. If you say yes. And common, there's only 10 days, only 10 days. You know, common, there is a full start, only 10 days.
In the beginning, you were saying that you are supporting the business and.
And I know, I know, I have my case. He's only.
Madam Chair, point of order. I'm sorry, I understand, and I'm being sensitive to your situation, but we have made a vote on it. I would suggest to talk with your attorney in regards to the situation, and they could better inform you of what's going on.
Thank you. All right, if we could have the what time are we at?
6:30.
6:30. Our meeting with the Cemetery and Parks Commission is at 6:30, so if the Cemetery and Parks Commission could move your chairs up to the table so that you can be heard better. Thank you. And do you want friends of the bandstand up here, or should we wait until? So I know Jerrilyn, that's. When someone's talking to come up, okay. Sorry, I have all my papers kind of floating around. All right, so I guess I'm gonna ask Cemetery and Parks to call your meeting to order.
We actually already did.
You did?
Yeah. But we can do it again if you want.
Well, I for the record.
I didn't think it was scheduled, so it was 6:30. I thought it was scheduled for 6:00, so. All right, I move we call the Cemetery and Park Commissioners' meeting to order.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Not now. All right, so the reason that we're meeting is because of the, what are we gonna do with the gazebo? And we, the Board of Selectmen, were asked to look at this and make a determination first about who owns the property. And who owns the property and where does the control reside? In other words, who makes the decision? Cemetery and Parks or the Board of Selectmen as far as what happens with the gazebo? So Harrison Maot did extensive research on looking at the title and the background, and did everybody receive that information? Okay.
That's a copy of the deed, did I?
The deed, yeah. And did you get the information that we sent out earlier today?
I think probably about 4 o'clock when I saw it come over on the email. It could have been sent early, but I didn't see it until then.
It, I think that's when, around then, maybe 2 o'clock.
Yeah.
2:00, 2:30, when it was sent out. So Harrison went through, he looked at his task was to answer the question, who owns the town common and who controls the town common? And he went through his statement of his research memorandum, this. You guys haven't seen this?
I haven't seen it.
It did go out in email.
I got it broken down, Chuck, today. It was out.
Harrison, would you do me a favor? Make some copies. Do you have a copy? You want mine? So before we get to that, help bring that up, there was a earmark received for $50,000 from state ARPA funds to go towards repair, renovation, restoration, whatever you want to call it, of the gazebo. So we're looking at that. Let's just wait a minute. I don't know how many, I didn't give them directions. So we're gonna be pausing for just five minutes till Harrison comes back down with copies for everybody. That's the contract for the yes.
Yeah.
What Harrison did is he looked at all the he did a ton of research for all the old town meeting warrants that had to do with the common and where the who made the decision on things, how things were done. We had been directed by town council. When Ross came to me and said, we need to appoint, we, the Board of Selectmen, need to appoint a committee to decide what to do with the bandstand, I said I thought that was already done by Cemetery and Parks. But apparently, there was a disagreement. So what Adam said is, we need to know who makes the final decision, the Board of Selectmen or Cemetery and Parks. So that was the task that Harrison had, to go through and see what had been done historically, see what was in the deed. Was it just given to the town, or was it given to the town to be overseen by Cemetery and Parks? Oh, I'll take the original. This is the original. Oh, yeah, this one's. You have one? So we put one for the audience? There you go. So the issues that her- that Harrison was asked to look at was who owns the town common and who controls the town common? And um. You know, he has facts and discussion here. His facts were, and I guess I'm just gonna read, the accessory's database shows the property is owned by the town and that that is supported by the deed. According to MGL, chapter forty-five, section five, parks commissioners may lay out and improve public parks. A town bylaw two point three regarding the definition of public spaces specifically includes the town common in that. Uh, definition, and if you look here, five point seven, five point three, five point four. Um, those are in the um, archives that Harrison gave out with this document. The Cemetery and Parks Department has over many years put workout for bid, issued contracts and maintained the town common. So ownership, this isn't all that long, so I'm gonna go ahead and read. In researching this project, the deed associated with the property was located. And it states that the property was great granted to the town's inhabitants. Additionally, the ongoing care that has been occurring for the last at least forty-five years and is supported by documents in folder five point six has been done by the Cemetery and Parks Department for the town. Additionally, we have recently located the deed associated with the property, thanks to Pam. Prior to location of the deed, it was a suggestion of Town Council that the town contracted Title Examiner, complete the work associated with the search. One project the council used as an example had a cost of approximately five thousand dollars for the examiner with additional costs for engineering work associated with the title examination. A secondary source, which is five point five, states that in April of eighteen ninety-four, the towns and church presented the town with parcel fifty-one ninety-zero. Was not officially deeded to the town until April first eighteen ninety-five. Additionally, there is some uncertainty as to whether the church still has control, whether through some easement, right of way or other agreement. Specifically, the spec- speculation as to whether if the fence on the parcel were to be removed, would ownership of the parcel revert to the church? No records reviewed to date, including the deed, indicates such control. So next issue was control. So I guess it's given that the town owns the town common. All right, two, while MGL, chapter forty-five, section five, supports the Cemetery and Parks Department having control over the property, it is still unclear how or if this authority was granted by the Board of Selectmen. However, because the functions of the Cemetery and Parks Department fall under the executive branch of the town's government, the Board of Selectmen have overall control of the property. One step that could be taken to further establish control of the property is a town meeting warrant article could be presented, similar to article twenty-two from the spring ATM last week, to specifically transfer the care, custody and control of the town common to whichever party is deemed appropriate by the Board of Selectmen. There is history of town meeting been being involved in major parks commission tasks. See documents five point eight. These votes, however, do not include minor maintenance obligations or other tax tasks related to the upkeep of the common. So it is more likely that the Board of Selectmen has that authority. See section five point nine, what where the Board of Selectmen exercises the authority to put a project related to the common on hold. So the conclusion is the town owns the town common. And the Board of Selectmen have overall control and authority over the town common. So.
When I do gonna take comment on this. I disagree.
The list of.
Control, I don't think there's any dispute of ownership, it's only like the town of Townsend and the inhabitants of the town. Um, and with all due respect, Harrison, um. The, some of the reasoning that you have here, I would uh, take issue with. Uh, th- there isn't a requirement that control be deeded or granted by the selectmen to park commissioners, since the town did establish a cemetery and park, originally it was a park.
Parks, and then it was a cemetery, and then there was cemetery, and then somehow.
No, I'm sorry.
They merged.
I might, there was a parks commission. And before that, actually, there was a cemetery commission.
Okay.
In the early nineteen hundreds, with the idea of beautifying common areas and parks, the state adopted the predecessor of what's now chapter forty-five, which governs parks and playgrounds. And in doing so, it basically provided that town can uh, establish a board of park commissioners that will have basically the law, the the oversight of public areas, public parks, including commons. There's a lot of case law that defined that commons are considered a public park. I don't think there's any question about that. But it is that interconnection of chapter forty-five that gives the parks commission, and again, there were two commissions, there were many, many years, there was the same people were on both commissions. So in when the town adopted the charter, it was felt, why don't we just combine the two? And that's why we have a Cemetery and Park Commission. Everybody says it's parks and recreation, but it isn't.
And it's Cemetery and Parks.
Because we have a function more directed towards uh, public facilities maintenance than activities.
Okay. Thank you, John, can I have Harrison talk?
Yeah.
Do you have any particular questions? I I don't have any direct rebuttal to that. The findings that I have were based on the research that I did. And at this point, the decision is left to the Board of Selectmen.
And Jeff, can we leave this this section out of the law you're speaking about?
All right, so this is um, chapter forty-five, section five, which was referenced many times in what I just read. Powers and duties of boards of park commissioners. Such boards may lay out and improve public parks, make rules for their use in government, appoint all necessary engineers, surveyors, clerks and other officers, including a police force to act in such parks, define their powers and duties and fix their compensation and do all acts needful for the proper execution of their powers and duties. They shall have the authority given to the mayor, alderman, selectmen, road commissioners and tree warden, respectfully by section seven of chapter eighty-four and by chapter eighty-seven in places under their jurisdiction. Subject to appropriations, such board shall also have the power to conduct park programs and recreations activities at places other than such public parks. So what Adam had said to me is, was this ever, were the park commissioners ever given this authority?
Well, I'm not sure if.
Or he said it had to be in how it was written in the deed. Was it given so that the park commissioners?
All due respect. Um, that might be a pertain to land that is not parkland, quite frankly. Um, there there's no requirement that that a deed of land to the town that is dedicated to being a public park and and or is used by virtue of being used over a hundred and twenty-five years is considered a public park. That that there has to be some grant from the selectmen to or a a provision in the deed to say that this is under the parks commission authority.
Okay, so let me ask another question. Um, um, Old Meeting House Park is a park in town. Who maintains that park?
It it's called a park, but it was acquired by the town.
Yes.
For conservation purposes. It's called a park, but it's not quite the same as a park under chapter forty-five. And so that therefore, it's it was it was specifically directed to the cemetery, I mean, not the cemetery, the Conservation Commission, I believe.
Yeah, I think that is, who, I'm not sure.
Conservation Commission, you know, also can have the authority to oversee the land. Under this, under the statute for Conservation Commissions. And and certainly people can deed land specifically with intent, as was the case with our park that was dedicated for only park purposes in perpetuity. So. I guess my argument, Barack, is that. Now, I'm understanding the fact that the deed itself that says to the inhabitants of the town of Townsend was dedicated to use of the public park for the last hundred and uh, twenty-seven years or so.
You're saying then it defaults.
Yeah, that it is under Cemetery and Park Commission, uh, because big, based on our charter. And I would also have to, sorry, uh, have some take issue with the the assertion that the Cemetery and Parks falls under the executive branch of the town's government. Okay, Cemetery and Parks is a separate rule. And I know there's always been a kind of a give and take between the selectmen and the Cemetery and Park Commission as far as the authority, because there are some things that we can't do, we can't um.
You can't sign contracts the way it states in, um, I mean. Who signs the contracts?
The, the.
Say for the sidewalks on the on the common.
Say again?
Say for the sidewalks on the common, who signed that contract?
When when you're dealing with that amount of money, the procurement laws require the selectmen to be involved. You know, we we can't go out and, for one other thing, we can't go out and spend money unless it's been appropriated.
Correct.
So I believe that money was uh, appropriated and obtained as a grant. But also, the the reason it was put on hold was because we didn't, the the town, the selectmen did have to sign the contract.
Right.
For that work, but we didn't have enough money to complete all the work, so it was put on hold so that funds could be appropriated to complete.
At town meeting, right.
But that's not to say that the Cemetery and Park Commission doesn't still have jurisdiction over the common.
It's it's contrary to what's in there, I mean, that sounds like, okay, so it's.
In what? Chapter forty-five, section five, uh, that I think specifically says that. Parks and are under the jurisdiction of the park commission.
If it is in fact a park. And what we're saying is it was deeded to the town.
Well, I.
Not as a park.
But I think this similar case law concerning Boston Common and how it was acquired. And there was litigation over whether or not the, you know, they could do something else with the Boston Common. And the courts decided that it's been used as a common for.
So it remains the common.
So it remains a common and it's a public park.
Yeah, we're not saying, no one's saying it's not gonna be the common. Um, it it remains as the common. Nobody says it's not that.
I'm not gonna belabor it, I you know, but I guess we have to agree to disagree about who has control over the common. If if in that fact, the selectmen's attitude is that they do have control over.
That's where we're standing, yes, that the town owns the property.
Voted on that?
And control resides, well, no, we haven't. But we can.
Um, I I'd like to say something here. I I agree that um, an elected board and the selectmen, there is, there's a very fine line between the two. And and we enter into that same gray area with the water department. Um, there's also other town-owned land um, that um, the selectmen. It's not that they have control over, but they do have the 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 final vote.
If I might, um, Chad, you're right. When there's just general land given to the town, to the inhabitants of the town, to the town of Townsend, unless there is a direction that it be given to a certain department, like highway department or something. And then highway is an executive branch of the selectmen, it is is part of the oversight of the selectmen. So you're right, I mean, if if the general law default is that if there isn't any specification, that it does run the, is controlled by the selectmen. Except if you have land that has been used as a public park, but you know.
So the argument would be whether or not this is a, considered a public park? Is that what you're saying?
I I, yeah, I I guess you could make that distinction. I think, I don't think there's any question about it, the fact it's a public park.
And if it is a public, public park, then your argument that as a park, um, mass general law forty-fives, uh, forty-five, section five automatically makes it the control of the. Commission.
Yes, that's correct.
If it is given by deed as a park.
Right, but it hasn't been given by deed as a park, that's how I'm reading the law, which which is it's is is what Mr. Barrett's um, argument is, which I respect. I I I do want to say that uh, my my question in regards to um, other issues within the park, for instance signage, isn't that under another board or another commission's purview?
Uh, signage is governed by the um, because it's in a historic district.
Mm-hmm.
Not only the, not only by the Sony bylaw, signed by law, but also by the historic district commission.
Correct.
Has control over signage.
But they don't own the park to say that, you know, this is, this is what I'm trying to get at, is that I just believe that we can all kind of work together and come up with some kind of um, collaborative uh, outcome. That's that's my goal.
Yes, Brian.
Ever since I've been here for forty-five years, maintenance of that park, the fences, the the grass, the painting, the lighting, there's always been cemetery.
Mm-hmm.
Over there.
And there's no question about that.
Question about that.
Always trying to do is continue that process.
And there's no question for that.
Quite qualified to do that.
And there's no, there's no question about that either.
The the reason we're here, I think.
That's what we need to.
Because of the article that was in the paper. That we, I mean, we thought everything was cool and then it wasn't cool. And someone has to make a decision. So so the the. But the the question becomes then, who makes that decision? Um, unless there is now agreement amongst the parties sitting here. And if there isn't, well, then we go to the deed. And the deed just says it was given to the in inhabitants of the town of Townsend and their successors, and not that it was given to the town of Townsend as a park. Um, and that's where Adam said, if it said it was given as a park, then then it, then that falls in place. If it wasn't given as a park specifically, if it was just given to the town, then it beca- then it becomes much grayer.
Okay, I'll 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 grant that, that that it's it's gray. I don't think it's as gray as perhaps Town Council feels because of the how that property has been used for the past hundred and.
It's absolutely the common. But I guess my my question is, and the question that we needed to answer is, who makes the final decision? When there is um, a discrepancy.
Dispute.
Of dispute amongst the parties who are trying to decide what to, I think we all agree the gazebo needs something done to it. The question becomes, what do we do with it? And I I guess.
My my comment is.
Teresa hasn't talked yet.
Yeah, she has.
I shouldn't have talked more.
She's not afraid.
Okay.
Um, the the, my my whole position on this is that, you know, it it was brought before us, had it not been brought before us, then, you know, the the two parties involved um, should have, should have worked it out. It's because it was brought before us that there was an issue. So that's the only reason why we're involved, because I'll be quite quite honest with you, I I would be more than glad to hand this off to a committee um, or or Parks and and Cemetery to be able to to take care of this, but we're not there. We're, it was brought before us, so we have to, we have to talk about it.
Our direction from Ross has been to appoint a committee. And I said, we already have a committee, we actually have two committees. So we just have to make, who makes the decision?
Right.
As to what happens.
Well, if I might.
And the answer is the Board of Selectmen, if we vote that. So I think what I want is a vote from the selectmen. Do the selectmen or do the selectmen not have the authority? So we have to determine that first.
Can I see the the law one more time? I need to.
Oh, you didn't get the law? Do you need the deed as well? Do you need the deed as well?
No, I still need it.
Okay.
She got the same copy?
The law's the law, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's just in a different form, yeah.
I think whoever ends up in his hands, it ends up, and they better be prepared to maintain and keep it maintained. Whoever are gonna find a crew if you don't have.
That's true. My family goes back nine generations. I think if both committees would work together instead of working against one another, we'd get a lot accomplished.
I agree.
And I've seen and been in enough parties in my life to see divisions in our country. And I think that we guys sit down as humans and people and adults and say, okay, this is the direction we want to go in. Let's work together to get it done.
The, the problem is that that's been tried. There are two directions, and I really don't want to mediate this. I, I guess it's, for me, I would like the gazebo to look good. I personally do not like the addition hanging off the back. And I will say that if the footprint of the original gazebo fits the needs of the town today, then fine. If the footprint doesn't fit the needs of the town today, then you increase the diameter and you make it look exactly the way it did. So the question that I need answered is, does the gazebo, or does the gazebo not fit the needs of today? Or are we going to wind up with two gazebos on the common? One old one, that this is the one where you go and take pictures and then you turn around and there's the other gazebo that you can actually use. So that's what it comes down to for me. But anyway, I'll let Chaz.
I just have one question. So where did the discrepancies start? What are the two commissions that?
I think maybe if we could talk about that.
Yeah, that.
I'll defer, because I've been doing a lot of talking, I'll defer to Geraldine.
No, you can go first, John.
The friends of the bandstand position. I'll, I'll just suffice and say, my, my view is that bandstand is a historic structure on the common. That's something that we should preserve. It does need to be renovated, it needs repairs, but it is not so bad that it should be demolished. And as far as the, does it fit the needs of today? I think, you know, the band has expanded, sometimes the band, the band was, had plenty of room up until about, what, twenty years ago, if I remember? I mean, the band always played on that bandstand, as far as I can remember, back in the day. And then about twenty years ago, the band grew and they needed more room, and that's why we got that porch. So I don't know if it's a sine qua non that the size of the band affects the size of the bandstand. I admittedly, it'd be nice to have a bandstand that would completely fit the whole thing, but for me, the historic district, the historicness of that bandstand has a value there to it.
One hundred percent agree with that. In, in the, the ideas, at least that I have witnessed in the meetings that I've gone to, that was of major concern, that it stayed as, looking as, as it does today. So that really isn't. To, to that, John, it's to the inhabitants of, you know, it has to fit within the inhabitants. I, i- if the bandstand, if the band grows, then, you know, I, it's all part of, of what we, you know, we all want the same thing. We know that it needs to be fixed. We understand, and for me, this, I'm Mr. History here. I want to be able to preserve as much as we possibly can the historic values of things. But I also need to make sure that our inhabitants are safe, and it has to be, it has to be compliant to, you know, all areas. So, you know, whether it be the electrical work or, or accessibility, we have to look at all of that. And I'm concerned about the, the, the structure in that respect as well.
Once you build a new, a new bandstand, like brand new and instead of restoration, you're going to comply with all handicap laws.
That's right.
That's right.
It's going to mean ramps.
Absolutely.
And all kinds of things, extra.
I, I'd like to have the building commissioner speak. Eric, you might want to come up here closer so people can hear you at home.
I did a little research on this earlier. I think you're, you may be doing that no matter what, because work performed over time on existing facilities by five twenty-one CMR says, if you do more than thirty percent of the assessed value, and you can take into the value of the land and the parcels, while the structure, then you have to comply with accessibility period. That figure is around forty thousand dollars, because it is assessed at a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. So any repair that's going to be more than that will require full compliance with AAB. So whether you rebuild it or you repair it, it will probably require compliance with AAB. Now, seeing as how it is historic, feet, it is a historic and a historic, it's probably eligible for the register. You can apply for variances, but they require alternative methods of compliance with accessibility. So I don't think that's a great option, considering if you don't do a ramp, what's next? Elevator? That's going to be worse. I pulled up several articles Lancaster last year where they put in a ramp. It's in the historic district. They had to do it, and, and a couple others. I mean, this is very common. So I think as far as accessibility, once that number is there and it's work performed over time, you know, in the next three years, so they go back three years. So if you, you know, if you spent twenty today and you spent twenty before, if it goes over a third of the value, you have to comply. So I don't, I don't see how that would be able to get out of with a fifty thousand dollar grant.
Can I comment on that? You, you just said.
Sure.
You said the estimated value of that random building was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
It goes by the assessed value.
Of the common?
Of the common. And it is assessed out of one fifty-one.
I want my house reduced.
Well.
That's the assessment for that chunk of property in the building.
You can ask them to reassess, but before, like last year was a hundred and thirty, this currently, that's what's on.
We're not getting.
Both towns doesn't tax itself anyway, as I'm aware of.
Not that I know of.
So that really won't matter, but that's, that's what they go by. That's what the AAB goes by, and they're the enforcing agent. So.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is, do you know, Eric, is that the value of the bandstand or value of the?
The bandstand's valued at, like, I think it says five thousand dollars. The land is a hundred and one fifty-one thousand.
Okay.
But you can take into consideration the value of the land when it is a facility that is public, and it is clearly a public facility.
Yeah.
So what was that? The limit on the restoration number, what was your number?
Thirty percent.
So a hundred and.
Fifty-one, or fifty-six.
That's, that's the land in the structure.
Fifty thousand dollars. So if that's the grant, that's that.
So what you're saying is regardless of which way it goes.
Thirty percent is what you'd have to do.
Right.
That, in not, in order to not put a ramp on that.
Except there's a variance possible.
Yeah, you can apply for a variance. It is possible, but like I said, it, it says you have to have an alternative method. My suggestion would be to reach out to the Architectural Access Board and get feedback from them before starting anything. That, that would probably be the best idea. See what other towns and cities have done in the past and what their actual take is, since they're the enforcing agent. I think they would be happy to do that.
Okay, what other, what other, do we have to be going through the Historic District Commission as well for any work that's being done on that?
Yeah, it's, it's definitely under their jurisdiction as far as the architectural features of that, because they're exterior and they're viewable. It is definitely in the historic district. So once you guys decide what you want to do, they'll be up to them to approve those changes.
Okay, so that's, that's, I just wanted to make sure that we're all, we're touching all the bases here.
Wouldn't, wouldn't the town want it to look the same? No, upstairs in the selectmen's chambers at seven o'clock? You're welcome.
Yeah, I couldn't see changing the way it looks.
Right, you would want it.
This is irrelevant to the way it looks. I think if you're going to enlarge it and keep it exactly the same way it looks, or you could fix it as is and it would stay the same way it looks.
Now, wasn't there, wasn't there lead remediation quotes that you guys got on that? How much of those?
Environmental restoration, Jake.
Yeah, I think, I think we got two quotes. I think that one is a little bit more than.
Professional, real professional.
That one's just for, for each of them.
And that's just for the, and that was just the lead remediation.
Forty-nine thousand already.
That's for restoration as well? Okay, so well, my point is this is much over the thirty percent.
Exactly.
That, that.
We did have another proposal.
Keep in mind though that contractors.
That was.
Yeah.
What was the date?
September twenty-one.
That number could rise very easily.
And what was your other quote, John?
Just for lead. That's just lead and that.
And removing some of the, the steps, yeah.
Do you?
Just removing the concrete stairs, removing the seats, backs, handrails and gallopeders.
So does the lead have to be removed?
And I'm not aware of that. I'd have to do a little bit more research. It would certainly be wonderful and safer, but I'm not entirely sure that it would, it was required. That is, more to help recover that. Where are you, my department?
I, I would.
That is an environmental.
Right. It would be better if it were removed, but does it have to be removed?
Yeah, that's a better question for Rick Metcalf, actually.
Yeah.
Well, it would have to be remediated. It would have to be taken care of.
Yeah, enclosed.
Would be, would be no peeling paint. So there's a difference between lead-free and lead-compliant. So you can get somebody to come out and encapsulate it, sure, and then it would be compliant with whatever laws. If you want to remove it fully, yeah, it's going to be difficult.
Okay.
I mean, considering.
But encapsulating, I mean, it's so flaky. How are we going to encapsulate something like that?
Yeah. They scrape it and then you can't use power standards. You scrape it, you have to clean it up with a couple filters. There's a containment area.
Right, the big.
It's not, you know, it's not a tent. You'd be surprised. You, there, the rules are, you've got to come out a certain distance away from it with plastic or have a vertical barrier. The vertical barrier can be as much as a two-by-four rolled up. I mean, the rules are, are sketchy when it comes to that stuff. The idea is that you could never fully comply. You could never keep all of that lead in there, but you have to be better than nothing. You have to try, and you have to do as much as you can, but you know, the wind blows. It blows. There'd be no way. I mean, fully encapsulating it, I don't think would be required.
And they do that, they can also put an exhaust.
Yeah, I mean, that would be ideal.
Yeah. They suck it all into.
That would be ideal, but. That, that's also a better question that we can research. Like I said, it's a more well thing.
So my, my, and I'm trying to, sorry, I'm trying to bottom line everything, just because A, I don't want to have to, to, to mediate something like this, but it, it sounds to me like there is, we have a barrier in regards to being compliant as far as ADA is concerned. We have a dollar figure that's tattooed to it as well. Being somewhat familiar with that for reasons we don't need to go into here. Even just the, the remediation or, or the care of the, the lead is, is high enough so that no matter what is done to it, it's going to have to, it, it's going to have to have ramps and all of that kind of stuff.
Yeah, that, that's where my research led me to believe. And like I said, I think that, you know, reaching out to the Architectural Access Board, further guidance would be appropriate. And, and we're at the first town that needed to repair the common. And they probably have plenty of examples of what, what you can and can't do, or what, what other places have done.
So in your, in, in your professional opinion, as far as safety of the current condition of that bandstand, where do you, where do you stand on that?
So the condition's poor. I don't think you have to be a building inspector to see it. Obviously, given what it is, it has been repaired many times over the year. I do think it can be repaired. We had an architect evaluate it and he said it can be repaired, but that won't include any kind of lead cleanup or anything like that. His, his, that, that's basically a structural review. I think he was coming from the, from the, looking at it from the point of saving it. Because if you take it down, you take it down.
In its current state.
Yeah, I mean, I think he noticed that it's obviously would not be popular to want to rebuild it all the way, and that's how he looked at it. I mean, it certainly, yeah, you could do that, but you, yeah, you'll, you lose some of its character, of course. But the floor. Well, not too much of it, but a little bit, you know? I think you would lose some of it. You know, it just depends on how much money goes into it to recreate all of the architectural features. But again, you're also dictated, you're also bound by historical permission, historic district commission, and they have to approve all of these changes. Any changes, you know? So, and to do that, they're going to want to see some drawings, public hearing.
Can I ask Alisa to speak, since she's the chair of the Historic District Commission? If you could come up here, Alisa, sorry.
To make, and that's. Going to take a judge duty, bottom line.
Thank you.
That's how I do it. What is historical about the bandstand? Its architect and style, which can be reproduced, or the material it's currently made out of, that will not last forever, in wood, rocks? So what is the love of it? What it looks like, the style of it? Do you think many of the townspeople know that this spindle's made out of maple and that one's made out of pine? That's what I'm saying. Is it? Like to see a bridge. But the architect, architectural style and what it looks like is really the historic.
So the point that everybody agrees on is the style and what it looks like. Does everybody agree with that?
I, I'm not sure what you mean by the style. I mean.
What it looks like. So if I took a picture of one side today, and then if it were rebuilt to exactly that, so it's the same look.
Well, the, the same look, but it's not the same structure. You know, I mean, you can certainly renovate and repair a structure, or you can replace a structure. You know, I could tear my house down and build another house that looks like my house, but it's not the same structure. You know, it's, it's going to have modern wood, it's going to have modern fixtures, and it's not going to be the same. It's not the same thing. And in terms of historic preservation, if I could just say that, you know, the, I'll, I'll, I'll omit that.
Well, can you?
Be rebuilt exactly.
Could you, you know, take those pieces that can be, you know, restored and reuse them on a, I mean, if you were to increase the diameter, say, you're not looking at increasing it ten times, just a little bit. If you were to increase it and then put that same side up, you know, so that it's exactly the same. You might have to add a panel, because when you increase the diameter, you're going to in, increase the circumference, but you could still reuse everything that is there.
No, I'm, well.
Or as much as you could.
I think you, you wouldn't be able to reuse it. I mean.
Why not?
Because it's not that size. If you're to expand the size of it, you can't use anything.
I'm sure you can.
Except maybe you could use some of the columns.
Yeah, you could use the columns. You could use some of the, the fine work. Yeah, I mean, you could.
In terms of the dimension of the bandstand now, you're not going to be able to take like one side of it and use that side. You would have to re, re, replace that.
I think, I think, I don't want to speak for you, but you could reclaim part of the, what this, I, what I think what he was saying, and use it to rebuild part of the same type of structure. So you still have, you see.
I mean, it's, it's kind of like, though, Teresa, forgive me, but it's, it's like.
I mean, it's, it's kind of like, though, Teresa, forgive me, but it's like if you were going to replace that doorway, okay? And you want to make it bigger. Are you going to take the part, the lintel there and just add on to it? No, you're going to take a whole new piece of wood. You're not, it might look the same, but it's not going to be.
But I'll use the lintel and the doors somewhere else. Like I'll make a nice table out of the doors.
Well, also, if.
If you want to do that and remove all the lead, I mean, that's.
But that, and that's, that's, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at this and, and there's a lot of things that, that need attention to this. And a lot of things that are not really seen. Um, for instance, the, the perimeter wood benches, benchbacks were added at a later date and should be removed.
The sound of music coming.
Right. So, I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things from the architect that, that are, are, you know, it's valid. I'm, I'm just looking at cost. And if we're looking at cost, we're, we have a volunteer board that's willing to raise money to be able to, to preserve, um, history for the town and build it back to where it was supposed to be or keep it the same. I, you know, it, it, you know, I, I'm, it sounds to me that's the argument here. The argument is that is it going to be, um, replaced with, with new and look the same as it did or fix up what we have? That's the argument that I'm hearing.
And even if you fix up what you have, don't you have to replace some of it anyway? Do you think that every piece is going to be reused?
Not wanting to get rid of all the lead paint. You don't know what's under there.
So there's two people here. I'm going to let Jerelyn go first because she's right here and then you're going to have to come up to speak.
Um, first of all, I'd like you to see what the bandstand did look like. Totally different than it is today. It has some beautiful work to it. The, um, the extra pieces and the, um, panels and things like that. I have two concerns, two real, well, actually, I've got a whole bunch of concerns, but I'll leave a couple. Um, this particular drawing which you provided to me by Paxton Cemetery in Paxton, I'm sorry, Rogers, um, was done in nineteen ninety-one. This show is a great, um, detail. Structure of the columns. This district. This was never done, but why were these drawn up? They must have been, these were drawn up.
I gave this comparison.
Concern is that ceiling and that roof. That roof needs to be, that ceiling needs to be taken down to see what those timbers look like up under that roof. Because there has been no ventilation in there for over a hundred years. We don't know that they're spongy. We don't know if they're okay. We don't know if they're built to cold. Do they stand? I loved history, I believe, I know you're finding that hard to believe, but I do. I've got some great revolutionary stuff I'd like to show you. But, um, you know, it's just, there's just so much to be done on there. And we're kind of missing the boat on a couple of things. One is, um, we like the gold, yes, you did update it. You have one plug. And you've got nine cords running. You can't do that. If we could update it, every pole could have a plug. If you just plug your legs in, you wouldn't have that issue anymore. Um, if we could update it to, uh, if we could make it a little bit bigger, uh, it's eighteen feet now. And if we went to twenty-four, that would give us two hundred and thirty-five extra square feet. That would, no, close, close. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, close, no cigar. Um, but that would give us enough room. That would give us some extra room on bands that are believe ever-growing band. It would also give us the opportunity to do a handicap ramp to bring it up the back way. It doesn't have to be ugly. It can be a just kind of.
It could just kind of fit right in with the circle.
You're not changing the size, you're not changing the shape of the bandstand. It would all take its, its place in the bandstand. But you wouldn't have these pieces coming down that's allowing water to drip and water to allow it to, um, you know, get rotting and things. This is, no, this is a lot of stuff that we're dealing with. At first, yes, you're right. I did want to make it look pretty. I really did.
I wanted to restore it.
Restore it and make it look pretty. After looking at this and going through this and going up there nine million times and looking, I grew a conscience that safety is an issue for this. It really is.
I would just like to add that, um, I've been building buildings all my life. And I looked at that thing many times. I've never gone underneath because my knees are hurting me and I can't get under it. But there is not one stick of wood on that bandstand, maybe up on the ceiling or on the wrappers. But then from the roof down, there's nothing good. And it's going to hog after be replaced. You can't take something and add it on because it's junk. There's no redeeming value to any of that wood.
John, go ahead. Well.
We have, not because it's changed. We, I had started getting estimates on doing the work, but if we expanded, those estimates are no good.
I understand that. Where does it go? Do you have an idea?
Not, not until we, we nail it down to see what, what we're going to do. I mean, it's ridiculous. I don't even have a guy going to do the roof for nothing. But that roof isn't a big deal.
So John had a comment.
Mm-hmm.
I, I, all due respect, Bill. You know, the architect did look at it and he said that it's structurally sound.
That's the structure, not all the wood that's on it.
But the, the columns are no good. Yeah, well, that's not what he said.
Well, he needs to reset.
He was an architect, not an engineer.
So.
You're an engineer?
No, I'm not, but I can tell. I tell you, I've been in the business for sixty years.
And you haven't gone underneath to look at the structure underneath.
No, but that might be fine.
But you're saying everything from the roof down is no good.
That's what I, right, and maybe the structure underneath is fine. But you're, you're taking those posts on the bottoms are rotten. You can go up there and take a look for yourself. Stick a screwdriver in there.
So John, are, if, if the restoration, whatever the word is, on the footprint that's, it's on now, is more than the one-third that Eric was mentioning, are you good with making it ADA accessible? Because that's a requirement.
I, 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 I would say that you should go for a variance because it is a historic structure. I mean, I think, I see bandstands all over the town. One in Belgium that, that bandstand itself is right eight feet above the ground. You have to climb through the structure to get up to the top of the bandstand. I, I've never been to a band concert there. I don't know if they still use it, but that bandstand is still there. It's a historic building. So my thing is that the fact that it's a, I think, a historic, it's part of our town identity. If you look at our common, the thing that brings everybody to this common is you look around the common and it hasn't changed in a hundred and twenty-five years, except for the loss of the Park Hotel and now the Rectoria. But bit by bit, you're going to start picking away at it. And so it's going to look like downtown Acton or Walton.
Well, that's, I, I, I disagree there because the, the options on the table right now that everybody's talking about is to keep the look the way it is. I would like to see the, that look exactly like it is with the features that would accommodate the townspeople's inhabitants by, by updating the electric, by making it safe for everybody. I tell you, the little structure that's added to the back doesn't look safe to me. And I'm not an architect and I'm not a builder.
And it wasn't there.
And it's not.
No.
For, forever. I mean, it was late nineties.
Because the, the band is blown and we had a scout that offered to make that addition so that it'd have more room. I think that that addition could be redone and made to be more.
So that's what I don't understand. How does that make it more historically accurate if you keep that addition on the back? Why not just?
You're not tearing down the bandstand, are you? You know, that's what you're talking about doing. You're talking about tearing down the bandstand.
Does it have to tear, does it have to be almost a tear down anyway in order to make it safe?
Yes, you have to tear it down if you want to make it bigger. You don't have to tear it down to make it safe. You do not have to tear it down to make it safe. There's no evidence of that.
Claire, go ahead. Wait, wait, when?
The Historic District Commission granted the permit for that addition to be built. It was the consideration that it was portable.
And it removed.
Everyone just brought back in the spring, block, constant seasonal. So you are in violation.
And Claire, and, and, and you're a member of the Friends of the Bandstand Committee?
Yes.
And you're promoting demolishing the bandstand?
And I'm also a member.
And now that's a member of the Historic District Commission.
Yes.
All right, I find that ironic.
Well, according to the architect, it says quite clearly, to the rear of the bandstand, a structure was added a few years ago at the location where the platform butts to the bandstand, debris, dirt, and leaves accumulate and promote rotting of the bandstand. Because this is not part of the original structure and may promote decay of the bandstand, I recommend its removal entirely. So the architect is, is saying that that should be removed.
So it remains the same size. I'm going to take into consideration the number of people you're putting on it.
Right.
Right.
So how, how are we going to move forward? How, how do you, how do you feel we should move forward? I mean, there, there needs to be, as far as I understand, at least what I'm seeing, um, Mr. Barrett, is that we need to, we really need to have like an engineer look at the, the structure underneath. Um, we need to see what loads are and, and we do need to see what's up in the ceiling. Even the, even the architect here says that there's, that the ceiling panels are, are not original and there looks like there's water stained and there's, um, leaking up there. And the existing B-board tongue and groove about the panels should be, um, exposed and, and looked at. Um, there's a lot of work that needs to be done, according to this architect.
I, I would agree. There should be more investigation.
Yeah.
About the, the structure. I mean, we're relying on this report. It's now, I guess, eight months old or thereabouts. But I don't think it's changed that much. I went up there last night and we had some vandalism there. Somebody punched a hole through the floor and somebody has been jumping or bashing on the benches.
The benches, yeah, I saw that.
I, I guess my thing is to preserve the bandstand, maybe make it consistent with the original. But the concession to that would be a, a porch, a concession to the size of the bandstand would be that porch, I call it, the addition that would complement the bandstand. So that you're adding to the bandstand rather than tearing it down.
So wait, 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 wait. See, that's what I don't understand.
What's the difference?
If you make it bigger.
If, you're, you're tearing down the bandstand. Yeah, but if you make. You still have the bandstand, even if you have an addition to it.
If you make it bigger, it's going to look the same. Five years down the road, people will look at that dance and think that's the way it always was.
Right.
If you grew up here. Except if you grew up here. But I'm telling you.
So we can abolish history and just go forward. That's fine.
No, we're not.
No.
You're preserving history.
You ever hear of the old North Bridge Conference?
Yeah, it was washed away. Right, and they do tilt it. Right, better. We haven't, we haven't washed away yet.
Yeah, but in another few years, maybe. Um.
It'll just fall down on its own.
And, and my concern. And, and my concern, Madam Chair, is that this has been, it, it seems, at least from the research that I'm seeing, is that this has been an ongoing issue. And if we continue to kick the can down the road, I'm afraid that we're going to have no other choice but to do this. So I think we all need to come to an agreement on where, where we want to move forward. I think that is the best bet. We have, um, through Senator Cronin got, um, um, really kind of jumped through hoops for us to get fifty thousand to kind of to.
That's one if you replace, that's fifty thousand.
That's a restoration.
I, I understand that, but there's also remediation that needs to happen. You're going to have to, you're going to have to put a ramp. Bottom line is you're going to have to put new stairs there. You're going to have to put a ramp. It's got to be ADA compliant.
If you don't get a variance for a historic structure.
And how, uh, how, how is that going to happen? How long does that take to get a variance?
I think you have to reach out, as Eric suggested. You have to reach out to them and find out. Call the, uh, the AV, AAV right away. But, um, personally, I think arguing against accessibility is wrong.
Yeah.
That is saying that those people don't have access to the same things that other people have. And the entire premise of five twenty-one CMR is to make public spaces more accessible.
Correct.
I think you will have a hard time making that argument unless you, unless you present an alternative to a ramp.
So how's the fundraising going? The timeline to rebuild this?
Well, let me tell you, the fundraising, because of COVID and because we didn't know where we were coming from, I wasn't about to go out and ask anybody for anything. I wouldn't want to have to say, gee, it didn't work. Here's your money back. So I haven't done anything.
We're going to have some concrete plans.
We had, we had some plans.
You need another.
Well, wait a minute.
You don't.
Okay.
You know what?
I think that.
There's people there that those people have.
There are. Should say that. And I'm not behaving nicely right now because I'm interrupting everybody. Um, Betty May, go ahead. Can you come up here so you can be heard at home?
I just want to make sure that everyone is aware of a few things that I suspect a lot of people in this room are not. Um, I've managed the band for fifty-three years. Nineteen sixty-nine is when I took over. Um, as far as we know, we're the third oldest band in the country in continuous service. There probably has been some increase in the membership in the fifty-three years I have managed the band. But right now, the addition on the back holds seven people. That there's no way they're going to fit in the bandstand. Music is written differently than it used to be back in the eighteen fifties. I mean, the band goes back to eighteen seventeen. It's written differently, different instrumentation, which is one reason why some instruments were added. Now, you've mentioned taking out the benches around the edge.
Not the benches, the backs.
That's what the architect, that's what the architect.
I just want to make sure everyone realizes, those of us that are within the bandstand, some are on, sitting on chairs, others are sitting on the benches around the edge. And bear in mind, when you think about how many people are in a band, it's not the size of the person, but it depends what they have for an instrument.
Right.
I mean, if you've got, um, baritone sax in front of you, you've got a trombone, you know, a slide you're moving in and out. You've got a French horn. You have to sit at an angle. You know, it's not a matter of saying, oh, we can get twenty-four people within the bandstand. So if you're thinking of changing size, someone needs to take all this into consideration. Also, I know nothing of building. I'm certainly not an architect. But if you're going to have people involved, they need to understand how the sound travels. Now, we had one meeting months ago that I was invited to. Um, I, fortunately, someone mentioned this meeting to me tonight, which is why I came. Um, if I need to bring in people who are more knowledgeable about music and the acoustics, et cetera, I shall. Now, I just want to make you aware that size is important. So before, I mean, I like the bandstand the way it is, but I understand people have concerns. But I don't think we should be expected, at one point, it was said to me, why just cut the band back to the number they had, whatever, a hundred years ago. But I just want to.
It wasn't us.
So I just want to make sure that this is all in your thinking that we really need to somehow have room for people and the way they sit, et cetera.
Betty May, my thinking is that we all work together to get something that we all agree on. That's my thinking.
I think that would be wonderful.
Thank you.
Do you want somebody who has knowledge? My niece's husband plays the Boston Bach, okay? He played in New York. He knows about music. Now, that bandstand, now I'm going way back there. You and I grew up together. Now, that bandstand, now I'm going way back there, you and I grew up together, okay? Remember?
I'm not a baby toy.
You were right there, you're still out. I love you, no matter what. But they had the big phone, the speakers, okay? They were giants. We could hear that down past steroids. Now they got the small ones up there, you can't even hear it inside the phone. That's the differential, okay? Do you want to go back to the physicality?
Go ahead.
But let's get back to reality. Tumultum is tumultum. Petrol is petrol. Rotten is rotten. They all got their own.
Bottom line.
Jerry, you know, I think the world, you know.
No, don't worry.
But we might, we go back a long ways together. But anyway, you know, if you say that what happened was, someone came out of the paper, that's not what I said. I told them what was said to me. And that was put in my.
No, they didn't make that up.
Well, besides that, let's, let's, look, I want to give Pam a chance to talk because she hasn't said anything yet. So go ahead and then I think we need to make a decision.
So. There's been a lot of conversation, controversy, however you want to order, restore, repair, tear it down, rebuild. Okay, I will do disclaimer here, I'm very prejudiced. I come from an older town, much older than towns in that has great pride in restoring their town. I come from Deerfield, Mass, and they take great pride in restoring anything and everything. Okay, I mean, there are museums there, there's, there's just a lot of, a lot of effort in, goes into research and restoration. You restore and preserve before you tear down and rebuild. And they don't tear down and rebuild anything, trust me, I know. The bedroom in my house was a mess for five years while we restored the house. That being said, this is a letter that went out from the Friends of the Bandstand in October, Jerry. And it says, this citizen's group introduced to you as the Bandstand Preservation Committee is handforth known as the Friends of the Bandstand. Per the recommendation of legal counsel upon request of the Cemetery and Parks Commissioners, John Barra, whereas John Barra is a duly elected official by the town citizens, the fiduciary responsibility of this commission is to protect, preserve and restore the bandstand to its original beauty. You could see that our mission and goals remain unchanged. So that was the initial, when everybody first came. That's correct. That was the initial until we got to take a better look at it. And then after that, it went all downhill. But I'd get back to the sound. Today, the sound system is tough. It's not the greatest, but there are, I mean, we could give, you know, doing the bandstand, that would be one thing that we'd have to think about our sound system. The sound system is not what it should be.
I need to tell you something. When we play, when we play, the sound system is not on. We only use the sound system for announcements.
Oh, so you use it just for a PA?
That is correct. Because if you're going to get to an extensive sound system, you've got to have them positioned by this instrument and that instrument.
Well, then why is there a sign up there, a sound system provided by, I forget who it is, but why?
Just for the PA, just for announcements.
I believe that it's maybe the cable group that's recording it.
Well, I don't know. No, I don't think so. Okay, well, we have to make a decision on what direction we're going. So I guess I'm looking to the Board of Selectmen for our options are to assign a committee that is different from the two that exist here, different from Cemetery and Parks and different from the Friends of the Bandstand. A committee to come back to us with a building plan. And leave it with them. That's option one. Option two is to say, these are the requirements that the selectmen have. And again, assign a committee made up of the two to come back.
Option three?
Yep, go for option three.
Option three is I would like to see the Friends of the Bandstand and the Parks and Cemetery come to an agreement on how they want to go forward and then come back to us.
Okay.
Period of time.
Then they have one week, as far as I'm concerned. Because, because here's the thing, we're here because of that. We're here because of this, Madam Chair. Otherwise, we wouldn't be here. Go ahead, Teresa.
I guess would like to see some, I know this is, what, only eight months old, but was this done by an engineer?
An architect.
Architects, which is, which is different.
Which is right. I really think we need some, go ahead, sir.
Teresa, I'm Roger, Proza Superintendent. Sometimes, Box, please meet you. I guess what I need to say is, this could have been handled quite a while ago when I'd been asking Jerry if they had retained an engineering firm yet to see what was going on with that structure, because I had done my homework with an architect. I'd done my homework with the remediation people. And I gave her a list of engineers and she said she was still working on it. And now, in my mind, we've gone from that to this eight months later.
In my mind, I received a notice from you that was signed two days after I left for Florida, and that was my notification.
Notification of.
Let's see what it is.
So Madam Chair, what I would like is, as you said, I'd like to see the Friends and the Planning Committee, I mean, the Parks Commission work together, but I'd like it to be based on some engineering information.
I think that's probably our next step. I really do, as far as an engineering firm, but.
But what, what will the direction be to the engineering firm? Will the direction to the engineering firm say, give us, you know, look at it this way and look at it that way and tell us how much it costs or what the differences are? Or are you going to go with them and say, this is our plan. We want to keep the footprint, restore exactly as, is make it ADA compliant in the mix? Or are we going to increase it?
If I might, Madam Chairman, you're exactly right. And I think that, you know, who you hire is going to make a big decision on what's going to be the outcome. In the restoration of this building, Memorial Hall Restoration Committee had been working for years, you know, trying to, you know, restore this building. And when they finally went out to get an architect to do the design, they specifically asked for someone that was going to restore the building. And that's what we got, a restored building. You know, it's functional, but it's restored. So I'd like to see the same thing. And maybe you have to have the options. You know, what's the option with restoring the original bandstand? What's the option with, you know, building a new bandstand, the relative cost?
So help me understand, I'm going to go back to you. When you go to an engineer, they wouldn't look at the project and say to you, look, if you're trying to restore it, it's really not possible because of this, this, this. So if you are trying to restore it, you can do this, but it's going to cost you that much more. But if you're a police, that's not how they go into a project automatically. You have to direct them how to go in.
You have to have a scope of work.
Yeah, you have to have a scope of work for them. And you also have to find out the same engineering firm is willing to take the project on as far as prevailing wage is concerned, sealed bid is concerned, because you've gone way outside the scheme of the three phone poles with this.
So would it be within reason to ask an engineer that we're looking to either? What are we trying to do here? Because there's two things, either rebuild or, is that what you're asking the engineer to do?
If I was to handle this, I would try to have the engineer try to figure out the capacity of what the porch, I know John's going to hate me at this point, suit the capacity of what it would be, the size of gazebo to accommodate what's been used on the back porch. In case the decision was made to enlarge it and keep it in its state. Or what it would be to restore it to its original state now with handicap accessibility.
That's what I'm looking at for a scope, that would, that would.
That would be the option.
Okay.
Yeah, because he would be able to figure out square footage and what's going on on the back porch.
Or she.
For the size of foot.
My two things are, make sure it's big enough to meet today's needs.
Right.
And that it is historically accurate.
Is it big enough now with the porch ready? Does it have to be bigger? Get a lot of snow, it's all bigger than this.
I think we have the answer.
Unfortunately, Memorial Day, we may have a real small group of problems. Some of us would literally have to wait for other people to move to get out, as far as within the bandstand. I actually have one player that has no human rights. And we get him, he gets himself up the steps, we help him with his equipment. But like if you're in room two, well, let's say something happens and I need to leave the bandstand. People in front of me need to move so I can get out of my chair. So the back of the bandstand is where I do have the trombones, so they've got the sliding space, the percussion. Of course, again, it depends where you put people. Certain instruments can be in certain locations as far as the sound travels. So, I mean, bigger in some ways would be nice, but I mean, I'm the first person who doesn't really want much to change in the bandstand.
Roger, I was an architect. I was a mechanical engineer, so. And that's the way it is.
So if we had an engineer, Roger, take a look at this to answer the scope that we're talking about. Do you know roughly how much that would cost?
Yes, I don't have a clue.
Okay.
I'm assuming, in the experience I had doing the sidewalks in the Common, I would assume that if he was going to take the complete project on prevailing wage, sealed bids and all that, we're probably looking somewhere around ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
Because it was about twenty-two to have an engineer for the sidewalks in the Common, you know, sealed bids, prevailing wage.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Jereline.
I just want to know if we need to bring into, we need to bring this community together. We're getting further and further impacted. It's getting ridiculous. I know we talked about prevailing wage and everything like that, but is there any way that we could bring the vocational school into it? I mean, there's nothing really that fancy on the bandstand that we need to go out for a million bids for this and this, that. That's what we're paying for those kids to do and they carry all their licenses and they carry all the insurances. Why couldn't we have them doing the millwork?
You're dealing with lead, Jerry. You're dealing with lead.
What if you got that removed first? Yeah. Harrison, what were you going to say?
The first thing is regarding engineering costs, Neshova Tech has recently had some engineering work similar in the scope that we're looking at. And it was roughly that ten thousand dollars a project mark, so that is probably a good estimate. But that could be higher at this point. And the other thing is, I'm sure carpentry, not that I'm speaking on behalf of what the school would be willing to do, but I know our carpentry program is capable of doing this kind of project. I don't think our engineering program would be involved in an RFP like this. But I know carpentry could theoretically be involved and that's something to engage Jeff Schumacher on and Dr. Pigeon.
What about electrical? I mean, that's what they're teaching those kids.
Is there an electrical component of the bandstand?
Yeah, there is. John, go ahead.
Unfortunately, I've got to go because I've got another obligation tonight. And I wouldn't, I'd certainly be willing to, you know, talk with the Friends of the Bandstand further about trying to come to a consensus about it. I can't be certain that we would, but ultimately, then there'd have to be a decision. But I would certainly want to see, explore what we could do. I'm not entirely confident that we can well, replicate the bandstand so that it looks the same. It's not going to look the same. But it'll look something like it, you know, that's something that, you know, if the people are satisfied with that, then, okay. But anyways, I just say, I don't know what you guys are going to decide tonight, but I just have to say, I have to leave on the note that I'm certainly willing to.
Okay, then I.
If we take the stairs off, it changes the look. But those stairs have to come off, you know that.
It changes, it changes the look, but again, I'm going with the idea that we're trying to restore it to what it looked like in at least nineteen forty-five or nineteen forty-one. And restore the filials and all the little.
Right, right.
You know, work that was done.
The balustrades.
Removing the lead paint, you know, we talked about the fact we have to maybe remove the banisters and rebuild those. But I still don't believe it necessitates, you know, taking that building down and putting up something new. And the big problem is size. The electrical, all that other stuff can be dealt with. But the size, if the ultimate decision is we want a bigger bandstand, you know, then, okay, that's a completely different bandstand. I don't agree with that as far as this is a historic structure, which I think we should preserve as part of our town's heritage. And I think it would be.
Okay, so this is choice four. Restore it. Make a different place for the band in the Common. Set up a platform at the one nineteen end, put the band there, have the concerts there and have a restored bandstand that looks the way it did, but without the band on it. Make a platform that's removable at the end of the summer to put the band on, play there. You're still on the Common, you're just in a different part of it. You know, you turn around, turn your chairs around, you know, and you've still got the restored gazebo. That's another option. And it becomes just that, a restored gazebo and the band platform is removed at the end of the summer. It's a, you know, okay, so what I want, thank you. I want a motion to remand this for a decision to the Cemetery and Parks jointly with the Friends of the Bandstand. You have to report back to us at our first meeting in June. With a report back, the first meeting in June with a decision. If in fact you cannot agree on what is going to happen, we, the Board of Selectmen, will make the decision as to what's going to happen and then ask Cemetery and Parks to go forward with engineering.
So moved.
I don't think we need any further discussion. Teresa, how do you vote?
Chastex and Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Kelly, yes. Well, with a decision is made as to what we're going to do, so maybe your comments should be to the group that we've just remanded this to. Which is the same people that are sitting in front of us who couldn't agree previously. It's like, go home and fight it out.
You know who doesn't like you right now? When we leave this building for engineer names.
June seventh.
Can I?
Hang on, hang on one second. Just hold that thought one second.
I have another one here, wait, hold on. This is back to red paint standing behind it.
Okay.
We'll take copies of those. I don't have them. You can just copy them. All right, I'd like to hear what Eric has to say.
Yeah, I mean, we can definitely pursue any kind of engineering. I was speaking with Ken earlier tonight. Architects come in different flavors. Some do soup to nuts, some are more on the design end. I think Mr. Lorgan is wonderful. Personally, I've had him on other projects. One of the projects he was on, he used Peter Reynolds from Mackenzie Engineering to do the engineering portion of the job that he wanted done. He said, I want a structural engineer in here to take a look at this. Peter charges three hundred for consultation to come out. And then he will give you a ballpark figure on what it's going to cost to do the engineering. But more than welcome to pursue others, put it that way, that they all seem to come in different flavors. You know, depending on. You know, depending on, even when I spoke to Robert Theron, he's a lot different than a younger architect that I've worked with before, who only really is concerned with the design. Whereas Ken said, I do it all. It really depends. They come from different schools and stuff. But yeah, getting a second opinion will not hurt regardless.
Okay, thank you, Eric. All right, so you guys have your.
My team orders.
Okay, so we will put you on the agenda for June 7. And June 7, it's a Tuesday. It's our first meeting in June. Thank you very much. Let's say, let's put you at the beginning. Yeah, I'll let Pam know the time for June 7. Let's say 6:15. Well, it's taped, that's what can be. So Tuesday, June 7. You guys, let us know. Come back with a report on what you're gonna do. That's a deadline for the decision. If you don't make it, we make it. All right, we have a meeting to continue with here.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. All right.
Give me a call, Rog.
You have the 6.1 that we're doing, you have the 6.0 for it? Not math, but.
6.1. It's 5.6. And it's in the SharePoint, but not in the posted agenda.
Oh, I can't get it for SharePoint.
Okay, thank you very much.
This one?
Yes. It's not in the posted agenda, but it is. So let's go through this. All right, yes, it's that.
Do you have this agenda?
No, I can't get into the SharePoint. I couldn't do it.
At all, Teresa?
No, I can't. I just can't.
Oh, on this, yeah, okay. So 4.1 we eliminated, moving that to 517, ARPA projects. All I will say about that is we're coming back, I'm coming back on the 17th with three policies. So just expect that. Nothing else has changed at this point.
You're coming back from where?
I will be bringing forward to the board three policies. Three ARPA policies.
So we've had previous meetings that we've allocated, roughly kind of. And then this is making policies for actually spending it.
Right. 5.1 Town Administrator Updates and Reports, there are none. Reports from Board Liaisons. I don't think I have anything right now.
The only thing I have is I got all the emails, and I've heard that from almost everybody. I'll be setting up, you know, time with each of them. One person did reach out to me and did wanna talk to me about something. And we'll see how that goes, and I'll report back next week.
That works. I do have, I will say that, and this is from your liaison, I was in your before. The Board of Selectmen received the MRPC appointment form. And so I'll bring that to the May 517.
Okay, and I did have a question about that. This is, not the MRPC, but the other board that I'm on is the.
MBTA? Yeah, we'll talk about that.
Like, which ones do I?
Let me see what you have there.
MJTC, is that what? No, that's MBTA.
This is the MBTA community.
Right.
So the Regional Community Meetings, oh, I know what this is. No, Bus Network redesign, no. I have another thing from MJTC. This is Mass Bay Transit Authority.
So you have me listed as the MBTA committee, so that came from the MBTA. So I just don't know which meeting I should be listening to.
We are in the Lowell Regional Transit Authority. So it's LRTA. Because we're a 43D community, because of our proximity to Shirley, and Shirley has an MBTA line, they are in the MART side. So the buses that run to that MBTA station are MART buses, but we're in Lowell Regional Transit. And the Council on Aging does use Lowell Regional Transit Authority for for transportation.
Right.
So.
LRTA.
So we need to look at how that's gonna work when MBTA communities are settled in. And I'm hoping to hear something in the DTLTA process on that, which we may or may not find out.
Okay, so I reached out to them and let them know that I'm their liaison. And they said they can't arrest of anything going on in this area.
That sounds good, yeah.
I had received an appointment. I don't know if you had received it or not. It was Recreation. Had an appointment. I would imagine for their board.
Oh, well.
Was it received? I received it. I'm assuming I was copied on it. If not.
I haven't seen it.
Okay.
So look at, put it in the 517 meeting or under, you know, appointments, which is what? Three appointments of officials and personnel, and we'll consider it then.
Okay.
Or put it in communications. I haven't looked at the communications in a few days. We also received a conservation volunteer response form. And I think we all three received it. I forwarded it to the.
Conservation?
Conservation.
Okay.
To Mike, Jessica, and Matt. I also think we need to look at postings for conservation because they are down one person. And so if they don't post, I would recommend that the Board of Selectmen post, but we can talk about that next week.
I also received an individual post volunteer for the Planning Board, which I forwarded to the Planning Board Administrator.
And I guess while we're talking about that, I've been cleaning up the jobs and volunteering site on the website to make sure that all the postings are current, because there are many that were not. So there are a few new postings coming in. But if you look at that on the website, it looks different. Because we did get a volunteer response form for someone who didn't indicate what position they wanted. You know, what they were interested in. So I asked Katie to get back to the person and say, look at the jobs and volunteering. And then I looked at jobs and volunteering. It's like, oh, that one's from 2018.
Right.
That one's from 2020. So they'll be, by the end of the week, about, maybe next week, they'll all be cleaned up.
If I can make a suggestion to the navigation to the volunteer form seems to be quite difficult. If we could put that in a much more visible spot.
Harrison is gonna take this.
I'm very well aware of that.
And I think we wanna talk about how to rework that page because it's a little not, it's a free-form page.
Can you mention that in our meeting?
Yes, I will. So. To volunteer response form. So Harrison and I are going to be meeting next week. What day did we set up? Thursday afternoon. I'm hoping the owners of the Civic Plus site, none of them work in town anymore. So we're gonna set up new owners after the new TA is in place. So I'm hoping to do that earlier next week.
Okay.
And get the permission set as the permission should be for all the people. Identify who updates what page. We're adding a lot of pages for Harrison, like the 300th Anniversary Committee, add a page for them. We're gonna add a Human Resources page. We're gonna add a Contracts page that has each department so that any contract that a department has is placed into there so that at any time, so that it's public record anyway. You can just pull it up and look at it. The Human Services page will have all the job descriptions on it, as well as who knows what else. Still in design.
Yep.
So I have a whole lot of pages identified. And so that's what's going on with that. Public Safety, I have not yet met with, but I will. So Announcements and Communications. On Monday at 9:15, our new Town Administrator and Administrative Assistant will be sworn in. That will be in the Great Hall. And all departments, boards, and committees, et cetera, are invited to attend. Let me see what else.
It's Monday the 16th at 9 o'clock.
Is it at 9?
Well, I had 9:15.
I think 9:15 is the swearing in. But if you say 9 o'clock, yeah. That'll work.
Because if you're there early, you're on time.
Yeah.
If you're there on time, you're late.
All right, I don't think I have any, oh, wait, wait, wait. Under Announcements and Communications, let me just check here. I think I do have a couple. We have an announcement of a resignation from our interim Town Accountant and interim Assistant Town Accountant duties. So Teresa Walsh as interim Town Accountant, and Richard Sarason also is interim Town Accountant as of May 27. So we'll be talking more about that at the next meeting as far as accounting services for the town.
And just one question for the minutes. Do you ever use a name or you only use the title? When I put in the minutes, the resignation, I just put the position, right?
Just do the position, yeah, I think that's fine. We have these to do. That's all that I have in here for the announcements.
I just wanted to thank everybody for their comments and their presence at the town meeting we had last week. It was relatively smooth. I wanna thank everybody who attended. It was nice to hear applause and anybody that was involved in anything. I appreciate it. We're working really hard to make sure that we're doing what we need to do to keep the town moving forward. And being a part of that town meeting is really important for us to be able to make the decisions and all come together as a group. As you saw tonight with the bandstand, I personally just want everybody working together for the same goal. It's much easier when we're all on the same page, working together as opposed to, you know, against each other. So I would love to be able to continue that with more volunteers. We need some help on some of our boards and committees. The volunteers are very, very important to be able to get a lot of town business moving forward. And if you have some spare time, if it's an hour a week or an hour a month, it doesn't matter. We definitely need some help. So look at the new and constantly improving town webpage and look at what we do have for volunteer options and fill out a form and just give us an idea of what you're looking for as far as a position is concerned. And you will definitely be getting a call from one of us to be able to see what's the best fit and how we can get you on the Board of Committee that you'd like.
All right, thank you. Our next meeting is Tuesday, May 17 at 6:00 PM. I'd like a motion for reviewing and signing payroll and bills payable warrants.
I make a motion that review and sign payroll and bills and payroll warrants.
Second?
All those in favor?
Teresa Amos, yes.
Chas Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Cowell, yes. And then also, we need to sign the previously approved contract with K5 Corporation. We've already voted this. So this was voted in, there were two votes, December and I think March.
Right.
And so we just need to do the notice to proceed that were given to us. So I have those here. And.
So you weren't here, so if you wanna want me to make the motion, I don't have a problem or, okay. So Madam Chair, I move that we sign the previously approved contract with K5 Corp. for Reimagine Streets, RFB project, and authorize sending off notice to proceed for the bike lanes and crosswalks.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chas Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Cowell, yes. So let's do this. Let me pass these over to you. Do we wanna, let's do this now while we're still in the meeting.
Okay.
Takes all of our signatures, you guys. Oh, and then I think this, I just need to sign these. Just so you see what this is. I didn't know such a thing was required.
Do you all of us sign it?
No, I think I just have to sign it. And then we have this one that we all sign and that goes with. I wanna get some.
It's just to look at.
They both include both of them.
Can you just tell me the process once we sign what that, how does it get filed, like the hard copies?
These will, this is gonna go to, typically the treasurer keeps the original, or not the treasurer, I'm sorry. The accountant keeps the original. We file copies. And I also like to have soft copies made of everything. So it's kept online in a file. And eventually it will go on the website as well so that you can always put your fingers on these.
And when you put it on the website, is it a copy with the signatures, I would assume?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
8:11?
8:11.
Is there a second?
Second?
All those in favor?
Teresa Amos, aye.
Chas Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Cowell, yes. Thank you very much, everybody. Good night.